Good evening. Welcome to the 2019 General Election Candidates Forum for Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County. I am Merle Blandt with Business West. Business West and Kansas City, Kansas Community College are the sponsors of this forum. Let me introduce the panelists who will ask the questions. They are Mary Rupert, the editor of the Wyandotte Daily Online, and J.D. Rios, a retired administrator with the Kansas City, Kansas School District. Candidates will have one and one-half minutes for opening remarks. Then the panelists will ask questions. Candidates will have two minutes to respond. Panelists will have the right to ask follow-up questions. Candidates will have one minute for closing remarks. Please understand this is not a debate. Candidates are urged to focus on the issues. The forum is being taped for playback on the college's public access channels. The first group of candidates are running for positions on the Kansas City, Kansas School Board. We will start with Mary Rupert asking questions.
Two-minute introductions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. We'll start off with two-minute introductions. Valdenia Nguyen.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. I am Valdenia Nguyen, and I'm running for reelection to the USD 500 Board of Education because I have a passion for public service and a commitment to public education. USD 500 serves 22,000 families, and it is of utmost importance that we do what we can to provide them a quality education so that they will have a fighting chance. I am a professor of history for more than 40 years, and I've had the opportunity of moving students forward personally and professionally. I have always had a commitment to faculty and staff development. My higher educational qualifications in history, research, and mentoring contribute to my qualifications as a school board member. My goals include increasing student achievement and hiring quality teachers of color from KCK community. I will continue to work to ensure accountability and transparency of the district's resources and to engage parents and community more than in the past. To accomplish these goals, the board must change its governance policies so that the board has more authority in hiring, recruitment, compensation, and overall oversight. The hiring of qualified teachers of color will help the student achieve more and better. These students -- excuse me, these teachers live in KCK now, and they want to work for USD 500, and they want to invest in our students and families. I will always stand up for all students, faculty, staff, parents, and taxpayers. As a board member, it is our job to review processes and operations, and we must ask the hard questions and hold everyone accountable. How is the district serving students, faculty, and staff? Where are the funds going? Is the district reaching the community, talking to the community, and making KCK better? We must make USD 500 educationally and financially accountable. It is our money, and we must ask and answer when, where, and how it's being spent. Thank you. I look forward to answering your questions.
Okay. Now, we'll turn to Mary Rupert, who will ask Valdenia questions.
Is that going to have a long introduction?
Well, yeah, we can go ahead and do that. I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes.
So, my name is Frida Trezvan, and I'm seeking to be elected on the Board of Education because I care about children, their parents, and the future of Kansas City, Kansas, and Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. As a mother of children with disabilities, I have firsthand experience of the struggles families face in seeking appropriate services within the district. I am committed to seeking out opinions of the marginalized and unheard members of our community and working towards common ground. I believe in servant leadership and promise to lead thoughtfully and respectfully and to build strong relationships to find the best solutions for our children and our community. I want to help mend fences that have been broken in our community and restore trust and integrity where it's needed. I firmly believe in the school system as the bedrock of our community. I am passionate about bringing people together and creating solutions that will strengthen our school system and improve opportunities for all students and children within KCK because our community and children's future depend on solution-based approaches. I've lived in Wyandotte County for the past 13 years. I have -- my husband and I have two children, again, in the district that are -- we are very committed, and we believe that our school board needs to have a parent voice at the table, and I hope that I earn your trust and your vote on November 5th. Please vote Frida Trezvan. Thank you.
Okay. Randy?
Good evening. Is this on? Can you hear me? Good evening and buenas tardes, and thank you, first off, to Business West, to the Community College, and to all of you for being out here tonight. My name's Randy Lopez, and I'm running for USD 500 Board of Education. I'm currently the vice president for the Wyandotte Health Foundation. I serve on several boards in our community such as United Way, Vibrant Health Advisory Board, and I could sit here and talk about my professional experience that I could bring to this board. But above all of that, really, what excites me about running for the Board of Education, what excites me about being a part of the board, is my engagement and passion for our community. I believe in our district. I believe in our community. Most importantly, I believe in our families and students, the over 22,000 students that we impact every single day in our schools. You see, because our schools build the foundation for success and excellence for our entire community. And as a board, we have a job and a responsibility to each one of those 22,000 students and their families, to engage them, to make sure that we're providing the best resources for them, to make sure that we have policies in place that keep our kids at the center and at the heart of who we are, and most importantly, to care. I believe that I can bring all of these things to our community and to our board through my lived and learned experiences in my life. I'm asking for your vote because I care and because I want to be able to be on a board to bring unity, to bring hope, and to bring success and excellence for all of our kids. I've been a part of our community, and I ask for your vote because I believe in a few things. I believe in academic excellence for all of our kids. I believe in family engagement and making sure that our families are a part of their children's education. Also, I believe representation matters. We have a district that's over 50% Hispanic-Latino students, and currently, we have no Latinos on our board. As a matter of fact, we've never elected a Latino onto our school board. This November, I'm hoping to change that. We've got a couple of Latino candidates, and so you have some options. I think together as a board, we can bring unity and hope to our kids and our community, and I'm hoping and asking for you to consider voting for Randy Lopez for USD 500. Thank you.
Gary?
Hi. My name is Gary Enrique Bradley Lopez, but my name is too long for the ballot, so for the next couple of days, I'll be going by Gary E. Bradley Lopez. And I am running to be your Kansas City, Kansas Public School, USD 500 Board of Education. I first want to start off by saying thank you to the panelists, to Business West, and all the organizers that helped put this together. Throughout my education, I was always told that if I go to college, I would need someone to take notes for me. I struggled through my education. I had IEP. I was in special ed. My scores weren't always the best on any standardized test, and I lost a year of education when my mother was deported. But nevertheless, I had teachers, I had parents, I had administrators, and I had people there to support me to ensure that I have academic success, and I can stand here in front of you all as the youngest candidate for school board. And so throughout this time, I've been able to learn so much about what it's like to be someone who struggled in their education but be able to grow and be academically successful. And I think that it's important to have a student who just recently graduated from the district in order to understand those values. But nevertheless, as I stated, I had those people that were there by my side that were able to push me. Unfortunately, many USD 500 students don't have the same opportunities that I had, don't have the same people in their circles that helped them survive and helped them do what they need to do academically. Therefore, I decided that I was going to put my hat in the ring and make sure that I can run for school board to fight for each and every USD 500 student who is just like me, who is another Gary, who is out there in their education struggling and trying to figure out what they can do in order to make themselves academically successful. So, before I made the decision to run, I decided that I would talk to parents, to teachers, to members of this community to ensure that I know that I'm making the right decision and to see the value of what they believed was the right way and the right direction USD needs to go. And although each and every one of them had something different to say, they all had one outcome, and that was student success, making sure that at the end of the day, those USD 500 students are graduating and have a plan when they graduate. So, as I went on from there, I decided that I was going to create my platform on students first, that the idea that students have a voice at the table, that students have people that are there to prepare them, and that students feel comfortable in the education that they are receiving. The next one is by ending the school-to-prison pipeline, which is a problem nationally, but I've started to learn that this is something that is even happening in USD 500, that we have to nip in the bud before something major happens. The next one is having mandatory equity inclusion and diversity training due to the simple fact that a lot of our teachers aren't from our communities or look like our students. It's important to have that cultural education for each and every one of our teachers to understand the values and lived experiences of our students, and then invest in conversations with human resources. It's important to see students that look like us. It's important to see students that look like themselves because that's one of the first people that they will see with a college degree once they get out of their homes and go into an education field. So, as I continue with these resources and continue with these conversations, I'm very excited about this forum today to answer more of your questions, and I hope that I can earn your vote on November 5th and vote Gary E. Bradley Lopez. And then after that, you can call me board member Gary Enrique Bradley Lopez. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica?
Good evening. My name is Monica Crowe. I am not an original Dot. I am a transplanted Dot. Thirty-five years ago, I decided to move here. I married my husband, and we decided to raise two children in Kansas City, Kansas. Both of my girls went through KCK schools. I've been involved with PTA for over 26 years. I've worked under three superintendents throughout the district. I worked with Dr. Ray Daniels, Dr. Jill Shackelford, and, most recently, Dr. Cynthia Lane. I've been very involved in my children's schools. They went to the same elementary school but different middle schools and different high schools. I've gone into almost every school that we have and helped start the parent -- PTA or the parent engagement groups. I've invested a lot of time and effort into our schools because I feel it's important that every student gets a quality education in a building that they feel safe and comfortable in, as well as with the staff. I have always taught my children to lead by example, and it was my children who kind of suggested that since I just finished a two-year term as the state PTA president that I would have some time on my hands and that maybe I should run for the school board because they weren't real happy with what they were seeing and hearing from their parents, their friends of theirs that are parents of children. So, that's why I chose to run. I work outside the home, always have, but I believe in transparency. I believe in making sure that all of our children get a good quality education. I believe in working together, that hopefully, the newly-elected board can do that. We need to be financially responsible, but yet, we also need to make sure that our children have the tools necessary to get the education that they deserve, as well as that the staff feel respected in the buildings that they work in. And other than that, I'm -- like I said, my name is Monica Crowe, and I'm running for the KCK School Board.
Janie?
Good evening, and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I'm Janie Humphries, and I'm running for reelection to the board. My husband, Richard, and I moved here 40 years ago, and we've stayed here. Our four children graduated from our schools. When I'm asked my occupation, I reply, "I'm a professional volunteer." I have been involved in children's learning and an active volunteer in our schools and community for more than 40 years. I've served on site councils, PTAs, booster clubs, in addition to many, many other community, school, and district-wide committees. Our children of today will be the leaders of our city and country in the future. They will be making decisions that will affect each and every one of us. We must invest in them. And I emphasize "our" because it's not your kid or my kid or their kid. They are our children. I believe all children deserve the opportunity to receive a quality education regardless of where they live or what school they go to. We, the community, have a collective responsibility to ensure each and every child has access to quality facilities, quality curriculum, and buildings are staffed with quality personnel. Excuse me. Over the past two and a half years serving on the board, I believe I've shown I have the knowledge, the desire, the time, and the ability to continue serving as a board member on behalf of all of our children, to work with students, parents, community members, staff, and other board members to make the best decisions possible for each and every one of our children. I ask for your vote on November 5th.
Yes. And Hattie Smith? We would like your opening remarks. Please limit those to two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I do apologize for being late. I'm coming from work. But I am running for the USD 500 School Board. I am born and raised in Kansas City, Kansas. I went to the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools at that time, not necessarily USD 500 then, but I went to the Kansas City, Kansas Schools. I've raised four children. They've graduated from the schools here in the USD 500 district. I have grandchildren in the USD 500 district. I was very active in my children's school curriculum when they were growing up. I was always at the schools. I was a room mother at different times. I don't even know if they have those anymore. But I've always been involved in my children's lives in school. I believe in excellence. I am from the business community, so I'm not an educator in the school system, but I am an educator in the business world. And what I've found in my career is that when we're interviewing, a lot of times, the young people and even not-so-young people that we're interviewing, they are not ready for the workforce. And what I want to do is challenge the schools. I want to challenge our curriculum that it will look like the technology of today, that it will prepare the students coming out of high school for the business world, for jobs. They're building homes in Kansas City, Kansas. There are jobs coming up everywhere. Everywhere you look, there's a "Help Wanted" sign. We're hiring. But yet, there are so many jobs that go unnoticed. I want the educators to challenge the parents, challenge the students with a spirit of excellence that when they graduate, not when they go off to a four-year institution because everybody won't take that path, but when they graduate from school, they'll be successful in their education enough to have confidence in going into the workforce and getting a job and being a part of the community and contributing to the community. So, I'm not a traditional school board candidate, but certainly, I feel like I bring a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge to the table, and I love children. I love our students, not just mine, my own family, but I want to see everybody's child do better because when the education kicks in in Kansas City, Kansas, USD 500, violence will go down, problems will go down because they'll be confident, and their goal, their focus, will be to become successful and a contribution, contribute to society, and you'll be surprised when people are confident in themselves. When their self-esteem goes up, then their worries and their problems go down. Hattie L. Smith, USD 500 School Board, November 5th, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll turn to Mary Rupert, who will start the questions with Janie Humphries. Mary?
Thank you. What is your view of the role of a board member? In the past year, there have been references to rubber stamping and to micromanaging on the part of the board. How much will you get involved in the details of school district issues?
The role of a board member is, first, they hire a capable, qualified superintendent, and that's done with a vote of seven members of the board. It's a board decision, and a board member supports that decision whether they vote yea or nay. Now, we are given authority to look at all the information that comes before the board each board meeting. We have an HR report where we can see who's being hired, who's leaving. We get reports about new curriculum or renewals of old curriculum that we're still using. We get an update on our buildings. We get an update on what's happening in education. And our job is to listen to the experts that we hire as a superintendent, and the superintendent hires people to implement the plans. That is our job. We question, but we don't micromanage. We are not the manager of the district. We are the board. We set the vision. We set the policies, and then we enable our staff to implement them.
Monica?
I agree with Janie. When I was reading through the handbook that we were all given, the only person that we hire is the superintendent. So, it's our job as a board to make sure that that person is qualified, effective, and doing what they're supposed to do. The policies, I believe, are reviewed yearly, and if there's things in those policies that we need to change, then those need to be voted on and updated periodically. But again, I agree with Janie. The job is to guide and maintain the vision and the integrity, but also to not micromanage and question every decision that's made in every situation.
Gary?
Thank you, Ms. Rupert, for the question. So, what I view that a board member does is by three things, and I learned this by one of my mentors, and a school board member does three things. Make sure the schools are running, so overlooking budget, making sure that we have the budget, overlooking the policy, passing curriculum, paying the bills, and those issues. And then the second one is hire, fire, and assist a superintendent. Make sure that we're there supporting them. Make sure that we have constant communication with them to ensure that they are doing right by our school district and making sure that they're moving the school district forward. And then number three is be the bridge between the district and the community. And in that aspect, is making sure that the community members know what is happening within our district, making sure that we communicate with community members, making sure that we ensure that the community knows the knowledge of what's happening in our school districts and bridging that with them. So, just being transparent with the community members and allow the right type of communication with community members because that's why we are elected by those constituents, and it is our responsibility to make sure that we reform that information back. I will, as a school board member, is to ensure that I know all the knowledge that I can, listen, and learn, take all that in, and from there, make a decision, and ensure that I can let the community members know my views but also why I vote on things. And then a school board member most definitely has to be a champion of the community and be a champion of the school district, make sure that they fight for them, that they represent the value, the mission of the school district, and make sure that they share positive views about what's happening in USD 500.
Randy?
Thank you. So, I believe our board is really responsible for a few things. I think I agree with what several folks have already said. I think governance is a huge piece of it, right? Our board has to ensure that policies are set in place that are going to positively impact our students. We have to make sure that we have the right policies in place and that we're setting the vision for where our district wants to go. And not only that, but once we make those -- set that vision in those policies, we have to be stewards of our most precious resources. That includes our students, our families. We have to take care of who's sitting in our buildings, who's sitting in those classrooms, and our teachers as well, ensuring that they have the resources by looking at our budget, making sure that we're putting the right resources in place to make sure our teachers are successful as well, our students are successful. So, we have to be stewards of those resources that we have as a district. We build a team, right? So, I think someone, you know, we said we hire our superintendent, and we have to build that team, that trusted team, that quality team who's going to ensure that they take that vision that we've set and implement that vision, implement those policies, and take care of our resources. And then I agree, we have to listen. We have to be with our community, listen with our community, and engage them in ways making sure that they feel valued and heard and that they feel that they're a part of our district and not just community members, but that they are a part of what's happening and the excellence in our district.
Frida?
So, I believe that the board, again, the number-one role of a board is to oversee and hire. The most important role is to hire a superintendent and, again, be there to support and make sure that our policy and our visions are being implemented correctly and to -- within the law. I would also just say that the board focus should also maintain and keep the students as number one. And so, we need to be available and accessible. We need to be informed and make sure that we are not only informed for ourselves, but we're being held accountable and transparent to our constituents, and so, making sure that we are accessible. I would also just say accountability is the number one or second to hiring a superintendent and making sure that we are assessing and using data to make those policies and make informed policy decisions and assessing all avenues that affect public education.
Okay. Valdenia?
Thank you. That is a basic question for any, actually, board, but especially Board of Education. Reference was made to a handbook that we were provided that specifically identifies the role of the board, the role of the superintendent, and it is broad enough to go into about six categories. The very first is listed as represents public education and serves as a liaison between the school district and the community. But it goes into areas of instruction to extent of the board has the policy responsibility to adopt textbooks. It goes down to the -- what may to some seem like micromanaging, but that even adopting policies for food program. And so, part of the challenge of board members is that knowledge of what our responsibility is, and we don't have to memorize it because we're provided clear roles. Now, where you -- where the problem has come is that those critics who don't know that the board has the role, not only and the responsibility to oversee the budget, that when those questions are asked, then that's when the concern or the criticism of micromanaging. But the board has specific, clear policymaking, governance, oversight on recruitment, hiring, compensation, that establishes the structure, and that is what we are responsible for. And also, by state statute, that we're supposed to adopt the budget point by point, and the lawyer for KSAB will say, "And the board member is responsible for every dime spent."
Okay. Hattie?
I believe that what's been said is pretty thorough, but certainly, the board should have oversight on the budget. I think that's a major issue, not only just hiring the right superintendent, but looking at the budget and being able to dispense of the money with the best intent for the students of USD 500. Because as I spoke before, at the end of the day, we want them to be successful. So, whatever it takes, whatever that looks like, I think the board needs to examine curriculum to make sure that it is what is needed to make our students successful. Give them an opportunity to compete with students from around not only the metropolitan area but across the country. So, I think that, yes, we do need to look and hire the best superintendent for the job, work in partnership with that superintendent, work in partnership with the community, but also, from a state perspective, then we are governed by the statutes of the state when it comes to education, being able to understand and discern what the statute is actually driving us to do, but then, at the end, bring that back in from a board perspective and customize their educational goals to the community in which we live.
Thank you. Now, we'll turn to J.D. Rios, who will ask questions of the candidates, and he will start with Hattie.
All right. Well, thank you, and thank you for your dedication and commitment during this election process. I certainly appreciate it as a citizen. One thing that -- One thing that I think needs to be clear, both to the community and to the candidates, is that USD 500 is unique in that the elected board is not just the Board of Education, but also the Board of Directors of the Public Library System serving Wyandotte County. You have a dual role, a dual fiduciary responsibility. Therefore, I ask for your thoughts on the role of public libraries in our community and of school library media centers in our schools.
Hattie?
Thank you. The public library in our community is very important. There are various branches of USD 500 Library. It's not just the one downtown, but they are across the city. Like I said, there are multiple libraries. There is a library board that governs and oversees the goals of the library, and then there are funds that are dispensed to them. But that does come through USD 500. So we do have to be very careful and very mindful of the money that's being allocated and how it's being spent. But I think libraries are very important to the community. Libraries are definitely important to the schools. A lot of times they're not used as much as they should be. Again, technology needs to be in place in the libraries. A lot of community members are going into the libraries to take care of business. So yes, the school board does have, play a role in not only the public school system, but the libraries associated with that as well. And one of the things that I know, because this is something I work with, then when the budget is put together, USD 500 and USD 500 Libraries, they are all together in that budget, even though it's identified line by line. The overall, the overarching funds are for both the schools and for the public libraries in USD 500. So we do have to be mindful of all the funds because that really plays into how much our property taxes are based on the library. So look at not only the school system and their budget, but then the libraries, because on your tax statements, then it is not just one, it's both of those that will drive the valuation, the properties, the taxes on your properties. So we certainly want to be mindful and be held accountable by the public based on the funds and how those are allocated out and how they're spent.
Valdania?
Thank you. That's a very interesting question. And honestly, I don't think we spend enough time on delving into the workings of the public library. It is unique, to say the, the least, because it is the only KCK, is the only school district that, that governs and oversees a, a public library in the state. So on the one hand, there is, there is, there needs to be, and, and we are, we are, over the four years that I've served, I, we've, I'll say we've upped our game as far as to take more time to look at the budget, take more time to look at the operations, and, and it has expanded its, its opportunities to, to the school district, to the, the community. The buildings are owned by the district, so the district has to be concerned about that management. The salaries of the librarians, about two years ago, we were, the board decided to make them more manage, well, let's say, more consistent with the area librarians. So, so their salaries have been increased. The librarians and the school libraries are separate. They then stay under the jurisdiction of the, of the, the school itself. But, but still, there's a lot of cooperation. The, what was your question about the media centers?
Well, they're called library media centers in the school.
In the school. They are valuable. And I'll just say, at any level, including higher education, they are super valuable for, for those students to not only get, first, so that they can expand their use of their own technology, their iPads, their, their, whatever they're going to have. But still, that, I once saw a poster, "Every student deserves a library." And so for, for reinforcement of what they know, for expansion of what they don't know, libraries are just valuable in the schools, but they also are part of a, a solid community. That, that I, the, the expansion out west, the South Branch, even the, the Bonner and the, the Pet District. What was it? Pet District, Piper, Edwardsville, and Turner. There's, there's the, the, the awareness that libraries are significant, and the board needs to, to, to up its game. It has been, but it's still, we could, we could do, we could do better.
Frida?
Thank you for that question. As a mother with children who have dyslexia and who struggles with a learning disability, I value so much our public libraries and the librarians who have helped my children so much. And so one in five people have dyslexia. It is a form of struggling to learn to read. And so our librarians have really helped in making sure that access to online materials and online reading materials is available, both in our school libraries as well as in the public library. And so I think as, again, as a board member, making sure that we are keeping ourselves up to date for our media centers and making sure that we are providing literature and literacy to all students and all community members. Because again, once our families and our, our community, our students are able to really grasp that grade level material, then we thrive. And as Hattie had said, you know, we have a stronger community and we have a less, we have less roadblocks and barriers for our students. And so as a board member, I would definitely support our public libraries and making sure that budget-wise, that we are in that, making those investments that are necessary for upgrades. Because again, we, we know that there have been discussions in the last year in regards to what to do with the downtown location and how to, how, how the school district should move forward in that. And so I would definitely be keeping a close eye on that because, again, I understand the value of our, our, our library.
Randy?
Thank you, J.D., for the question. You know, earlier this afternoon, actually, I was just at the South Branch Library in Argentine and was there with a friend who had her two kids there. And it was beautiful to be there and see her two kids playing with four other kids that they didn't even know. And the parents had a chance to sit there and talk with each other. A couple of months, or last month, I took my mom, who's there, hi, Mom. I took my mom to the Hispanic, Hispanic Heritage Month Festival that they had at the South Branch Library, where community came together to gather and to, to, to have a community event. A few weeks ago, the school district hosted its Attendance Awareness Resource Fair, where you saw students and families come out to get resources for their, their family, whether it was health resources or whatever that they needed. I say all this because libraries are a space that can build community. Libraries aren't just a place where you can go and check out books, although that's an amazing thing, right? But library spaces themselves are a place where community can be built, where people can come together in a public space, meet other folks, where we can have events that can create unity in our community, especially in a time where we are, where we, we're being divided in this, in this time politically. Libraries can serve as more than just a space to go and check out books or get on a computer. And I think that's also super valuable as well. It's a space where families can go and get some of those resources and, and, and check out books or, or get on the, on the computer and access Wi-Fi in order to fill out job applications or whatever it is that they, that they might need. So it's a space where they can go and also get some of that lived experience and, and some of that knowledge that our libraries provide. So I think it's, it's a space that we can really build, continue to build community and to share and give access to our community, to the knowledge that they're going to need to be successful in life. Again, whether that's a four-year college, whether that's getting into a job, libraries play a vital role in who we are. Frida mentioned the downtown library. I think it's time that we really look at, what are we doing to build a new state-of-the-art public library downtown that could, again, be that community space downtown that can help continue the revitalization of this community? We deserve that in our community, and I think we actually have money set aside to be able to do that. Why haven't we moved towards building our new library space? So, so I think that it's a space that, that can build community, that can provide access to resources for all. And it's a, it's, it's, it's a space that, that brings us together in community.
Gary?
When I first made the decision that I was going to run for school board, I went to check out a book at the library called "Run For Something." Not sure why I checked it out, but eventually it's helping out. And the librarian said, "Are you considering running for something?" And I said, "Yeah, I'm considering running for school board." And she said, "Don't forget about us. You, you, you also are on the governing board that helps part of our libraries." And the libraries are ran by two boards, the school board and then the library board by the unified government. And so throughout that time, I've been researching more on libraries and talking more to the libraries. And I recognized after talking with Ms. Carol Reivers that there are a lot of things that libraries can do and a lot of things that they are providing. And I agree with Mr. Lopez, that, the other one, that there are a lot of things that libraries can do in our community. I remember as a kid, my mom would always take me there. I remember getting my first library card, the enjoyment of a kid getting his first library card. I remember some of the students that I work with right now who have never had a library card, and that's something that we're investing in right now to go to the library and each one of them get a library card. But I also agree with Ms. Hattie that we have to recognize that this also is something that drives our taxes and go from there and have these conversations and look at our budget, then look at the budget that's set aside from the library, the collective budget that's for Wyandotte County, and see where we can have a space. We've also been able to talk and have conversations about the study that they're wanting to have in order to get a new downtown library. And I agree with what has been said, libraries are important to our community. They are no longer just a place for books. I had a job interview for a library. Eventually, I didn't get it. Now I'm running for school board. And the question was that, "What do you see a library as?" And we recognize that libraries are no longer just for books, but libraries are also event space. They're also places for people to feel safe at. There's places for people to feel like they're at home. There are places for people to eat, to get coffee, to even just sit down and use the internet. The idea of what a traditional library is has changed, and it's changing as time is coming into the future. And it's also time to start recognizing the importance of what libraries have. And then from going from there, it's looking at what we can do in the future of libraries, what a new building would look like. And I agree with Dr. Nguyen. The libraries have upped their game. They have done a lot of outreach and a lot of event. And I'm excited to see the future of the libraries and see what, as a school board member, we can do to ensure that that momentum continues.
Monica?
Thank you, J.D. That was an awesome question. Couple of things. Yes, we are unique in the fact that the school board and the, and the library boards are, are both governed under. But one of the things that I think might have been misspoke about was the fact that there, I believe, are two different levies, mill levies for it, that there's funding that is separated. But anyway, that's not necessarily...
There is a library mill.
There is. That's what I thought. As I say, yeah. So, I mean, it's not actually, I mean, it is, but it isn't part of the budget as well. I mean, it's still budgeted under the school board, but it, it has its own funding partially. But I can't tell you how many PTA meetings we've had at school libraries and, and at local libraries. My children both absolutely loved the library out at the lake. One of my daughters went to camp there. I've been to the butterfly festivals. So they, they truly are a huge part of our community, not to mention, you know, the place that, like, we all have said. You know, if people don't have a computer in their home and they don't have access to that, it's a public place. You can go there and use those, that information. And I think that the school libraries have really, you know, increased that as well. I know at the last forum, we talked about like night schools, and that was something that I thought would be very beneficial was if we could open the schools in the evening, then those library spaces within the buildings would be able to be used as resources for parents, whether it's continuing education or, you know, searching for jobs or, or just, you know, other types of programs that, that either the school district or the parents or the community can bring into those buildings to utilize those spaces. So I, I think our libraries in KCK are pretty awesome. The one downtown, I know that there is an issue with the boiler in the, in the building. I also sat on the All Cop Board, and they have the issue, same issue with the boiler in the building. So it's definitely something that needs to be addressed and addressed soon. Because I was at a school board meeting recently when I heard them approve the payment for that, and I was like, "Uh, no." So yeah, it's definitely a space that needs to be repelished or repaired quickly.
Janie?
I think J.D. picked this one just for me. I was, I was on the community committee that raised the $2 million to help build the South Branch Library. Anyone who knows me knows I'm an avid reader. I am a, I push for reading, whether it's books or in your hand or on your tablet or on your computer. Our library is, our board is in charge of our library, but we have a separate mill levy. We have a mill levy for operations, and we also have a capital outlay mill levy, which is new in the last three years, I believe. And we, the Wyandotte County Library Board is separate. That's what governs, like, the Pet District that people talk about, the Piper, Edwardsville, Turner. They do not have libraries there. They contract with the KCK Public Library to provide library services to their constituents. So on, if you live in our district, you will see USD 500 Library Mill Levy. If you live in Piper or Turner or Edwardsville, you will see a Wyandotte County Library Board Mill Levy, which is less than what we pay. But anyway, we won't get into that. But the library provides so many services for our community. We've recently gotten three, if you're old like me, you would call them bookmobiles, but we call them mobile libraries now, that go out to our senior citizens apartments. They go out to our daycares. They go out to a few of the businesses. These buses, mobile libraries, they have computers, they have internet access. They have an awning that can come out in the summertime. People can sit outside of the mobile library and use the internet. Our libraries provide event meeting space. They provide programming from GED classes to English second language classes, to story hour for our littlest ones. The value that the library brings our community is, you cannot measure it. It's very important. It goes hand in hand with educating our children. As I tell kids, even on your roughest day, if you can pick up a book or pick up your tablet, you can escape into another world and travel the world. You can learn so much from reading. We have, they just had the Library in the Park Program. There are so many things that we can do, but we have to remember that we service adults and not just children. We service everyone. And that is one of our, 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 our main jobs is to provide the e-library cards. Some people never even come into the library, but they check out online. They check out digital books. Kids can access homework helpers on the computer at home or at the library. So I will stop now because I'm about to lose my voice, but libraries, that's my thing.
Thank you. Now I will turn to Mary Rupert, who will ask the next question, and we're going to start with Janie.
Thank you. What needs to happen to improve academic performance among KCK students?
What needs to happen? We need to be teaching with integrity and validity. We need to constantly be assessing what we are teaching our children. Education is changing every day. We need to prepare our students for their future, not our past. So what worked when we were in school, back in, back then, is not necessarily what we need to be teaching our children now. So we need to keep up on modern educational practices. We need to network with other districts, other schools, on what is succeeding. Our district has come a long way in the last 30 years. We have more places to go. But we need to make sure we're taking our children in the right way. And that is working cooperatively with our curriculum department, with, I mean, I learned so much, believe it or not, from reading Twitter because there's so many educational... articles on there now that make me think, you know, are, are we addressing the needs of our childrens? Our kids come to school now with so many more, so much more baggage, emotional baggage that we can't even imagine. We need to address their social, emotional health because you can't learn if you're worried about going home to a violent situation or going home and wondering, is there gonna be food in the house? We need to work with our children on all levels. We're not just there for academics, we are there for the whole child. And that is my short answer. I'll give other people a chance.
Monica?
Thank you. I agree with Janie on the, the whole child because we don't know what everybody else's, we've never walked in anybody else's shoes. And I know Randy, working with some other organizations and even just some of the other stuff, I volunteered and have done. So, having programs in our schools and available to our schools so that we can address some of those issues. I think that making sure that we keep current with the most current curriculums and, and educational programs that's out there and review those often and update them as needed. And I do like what Janie suggested about working with other districts within the, you know, local districts that we can kind of partner with and see what they've got that's working or not working. I think those are all great ideas and, and we just have to continually keep on it and, and just keep updating them and, and making sure and reviewing, just to make sure that we have whatever our children, our children need.
Gary?
So, one of the privileges of being one of the youngest candidates up here is that three years ago, I sat in the same stu-, in the same seats as those students. And I was able to recognize where I struggled in education and I was able to recognize where I did well in education. I was able to sit and view that same curriculum because the same curriculum that those students have right now is the same curriculum that I had in 2016 and before. And so while recognizing that in attending college, I am now being able to understand where I was prepared and where I wasn't. And I think that's an important and essential thing for a school board member to understand, is where that education helps students and where that value is at. But I think that when we talk about making sure that our students are academically successful, we also have to understand that a lot of these students have lives outside of school that sometimes affect their learning styles and learn, and affect how they are. And we know the work that Randy Lopez has done with making sure that the school district has a grant in order to, in trauma, to have, to provide trauma-informed training for, for either administrators or teachers, and he'll probably speak more about that. And I think that's important because I also received that training at the Historic Northeast Midtown Association, which is a very, it's, it's an experience to have that training. It's, it's, it's very challenging to understand it, but it's also very important to understand the, the life experiences that many of our students go through. And we have to make sure that we are teaching the curriculum and not memorizing because we are so data-focused, a lot of our students are being taught how to memorize, how to do this when you do a standardized test, for the simple fact that so many people are scared that we're being just data-driven. Then look over the curriculum and make sure that it's working, that it's proven. I'm not sure what the curriculum that we're doing, Ms. Trezban has talked a lot throughout this campaign about that curriculum and where the curriculum works and where it doesn't, or really where it doesn't. And really recognize and look at that research and see how it felt and why it felt and why we are using that curriculum, period. And then change the traditional methods of education that we work. These are different times, there's different styles. What, someone told me that they had basics of, what is it, reading, writing and arithmetic? I don't know what arithmetic is, no, I'm just messing with you all. I know what that is, but that idea, that, that, that's a different style that, that no longer, that works, but we have to change the way that we teach it and the way that students are getting that information. I was, and, and in speaking and working with all, with partner organizations, I right now work for Heartland 180, where I am able to tutor some of these students, and today I was able to assist a student with American Government. And the problem that he had was being able to comprehend the information that was happened, that was given to him on, on that exam. And I think that it's important that we can partner with organizations to ensure that they know and we can refer students who are struggling with their education and we can provide them a bit of help on that. And then another thing is hire teachers of color. Students of color are more receptive to teachers of color and are better at understanding some of the curriculum that is being taught to them, especially through a teacher that has the same lived experiences. And then also have a platform for parents. Some of these parents want to learn what their students are learning, they also want to know what their students are learning. And if they don't know what their students are learning, then they're gonna have trouble with teaching them when they are at home. And then also the language barrier. There's a big language barrier in USD 500. We have over 72 languages of students that come within USD 500 that sometimes are struggling to understand that education. And we have to find, like I said, new traditional methods of education in order to engage those students so that they can be academically successful. But as well as for the parents, I was talking to my mom who was telling me about some of her friends who go up to the district and they want to understand what their students are learning, but sometimes that language barrier in the central office language can be kind of confusing and demanding and challenging, that parents sometimes feel like they just can't have a voice in their educations, in their, in their child's education for the simple fact that they're not understanding what's happening. And I think it's important that we look at all those issues and those values and list the things that I just provided and, and recognize what as a school board member we can do to challenge those things and change those things. Thank you.
Randy?
Thank you. So, you know, it was mentioned that we have a very diverse set of students in our district, over 22,000 students that come from different backgrounds, different lives, and we have to understand that. When we look at success, that's not met, just measured by some data point or some project. We measure success through people as well. And so we have to understand that our students are coming from different backgrounds and we have to know that and respect that and honor that and find ways to meet them where they're at. And that does come through some, some, some resources through emotional, social, emotional support, mental health support. Gary, I'm just gonna correct you really quickly, it's not Randy Lopez who's helping with the district, it's the Wyandotte Health Foundation who has a grant with the district. I, I know, I, I don't want to get in trouble at work. But the Health Foundation has a grant with the school district, we're in year, year two now with, with the school district, to provide some of that trauma-sensitive training throughout the entire district, from, from board members and leadership all the way down to, to, to all staff. And that's important so that we can understand what our students, what our, what our families are facing at home. And that's an important part in understanding not just the physical health, but the emotional and mental health of our students. We want to look at the curriculum and technology that's available to our students as well, making sure that we're providing the most up-to-date access and the best curriculum that we can, that we have to meet all of our students' needs. That includes special ed, that includes our ELL, English Language Learner students. We want to make sure that we have the best resources available for, for all of our students. We want to make sure that we're also partnering with our community organizations. There are some amazing organizations in our community that are providing some great resources to all of our families already. I'm thinking about Avenue of Life, who works with our homeless population. They have a partnership through the school district and they're working with our students to make sure that our, our families and students who, who are homeless have a transition plan and can get into, into permanent housing. We need to take advantage of those partnerships, not just nonprofit, social service agencies, but our business partners as well, who can work with our students to provide some of those supports that our families and students and that our district needs. We can't do it all alone, we need to have those partnerships as well. We also want to make sure that we have quality work, work staff, diverse work staff that reflects the community that we serve, and we want to make sure that we're providing the best resources available to those teachers and staff in the classroom, in their buildings. We need, we, they need our support as, as a board and as leadership to make sure that they have what they, what they need to teach our students. We want to make sure we provide that for them. And I think, you know, looking at peer-to-peer support, how can our students support one another in the classroom to build those successes in the classroom and hold each other accountable and lift each other up in ways that maybe our, our adults don't have the time to? And finding those peer-to-peer relationships, I think, is super helpful. And then again, something I said at the beginning, engaging our families, making sure that parents, grandparents, when you're working with a student, you have to understand that the family dynamics have changed. And we lived in mixed-status families who have all types of families, people in their family that we want to make sure are involved in their student's success. So, finding ways to incorporate their voice into the classroom and, and into their students' academic success is important as well.
Frida?
So, I believe that family engagement is also very important. We have, again, everyone has said, 23,000 students and families in the district, and some of our families, again, have never attended a school in this country. So, the school system is new and, and they're learning just as lo-, along with their students. I know in my family, my husband is from Mexico and he himself has said multiple times, like, oh, you know, I don't know that. And he leaves that up to myself. And so, it really, we really need to make sure that our teachers, our administrators are making sure that we are engaging our families and that we are also teaching them along with. So, again, we have curriculum that are coming in with the new Common Core, math strategies that we, families, myself included, with, you know, a master's degree, I don't know how to do. And you have these family dynamics in which kids are being taught different strategies in which the families aren't able and don't feel comfortable to help their children learn. I would also say that our number one thing that if I could change would be making sure that we're following the law in regards to evidence-based curriculum. We have 30 school buildings that have been identified as not meeting academic performance, and that means that we have to have evidence-based curriculum and to, for each one of those buildings. And the curriculum currently being used, I do not believe, meets those standards in which evidence-based curriculum is being taught to our students. I would also then say that teacher training is very valuable. As a parent with a child in dyslex-, with dyslexia, we have had to teach our teachers about this disability and then what is the actual best mech-, best practices to, in which to remediate. And that is just very, very difficult as a parent to, as myself, as a parent with resources to understand and time to research, but then I'm just thinking about our parents who do not have that opportunity. Teacher training has also been identified as the Kansas Department of Education, who has a dyslexia task force that will be presenting tomorrow our recommendations to the Kansas State Board. And so, teacher training has been identified by the state that teachers are leaving teaching programs and colleges, not knowing the best practices. And so we, as a district, need to make sure that we are investing into, in our teachers and making sure that we have a great onboarding and side-by-side practicing with our teachers as well as our pairs and a special ed department. And then implementing programs to fidelity. So, if we have a program that says, like our current reading curriculum, that the, the ratio, parent, the teacher-student ratio is three to one, and yet we have classroom sizes that are three, four, five times that, then how are we ever going to see students progress and ma-, meet those academic standards? And so, again, as a board member, I think we have to make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable, that we are utilizing and reviewing each of our policies, but we are also not passing in consent agendas, the payment of curriculum. And so I would say again, that I, if, if elected, I would definitely be looking at and working with our curriculum instructor and directors to make sure that we are doing what is best and what is legal for our students. Thank you.
Valdina?
Well, as you can see, that is a complex question. And, and it's kind of like, where do you start? With the chicken or do you start with the egg? What the board found out just last year is that the curriculum had not been aligned with state standards for eight years. That explains a lot. So, what has happened this past year was, would be the first thing, is that, and I think Frida mentioned it, is that the curriculum must be aligned with state standards so that the teachers, the parents, the staff, we have a better understanding of what we're teaching, how it will be assessed. Now, everyone knows test score does not explain a lot. However, since the state of Kansas implemented this multi-tiered system, it has caused districts to, to be data-driven. We now know that that social economic, excuse me, that social emotional development is very important. But, but I think it goes back to, again, having credentialed, qualified, experienced teachers that reflect the, the demographics, they're here in our district, they have been overlooked for promotion, they are not being hired. We need, we have, we have a lot of classes that the, the student-teacher ratio is large because we don't have the teachers. So, so getting a curriculum that is evidence-based, sticking with it, tweaking it, making sure the teachers are trained in it. State doesn't fund professional development, but we have to. And it has to be clear, it has to be quality. And listening to, and speaking with some of the teachers, they were, they were concerned. First-year teachers, inexperienced anyway, first, second or third, not knowing what to do. And in some of the listening tours, we heard that some of the ICs were, were unsure. So, so if we expect and we must expect to improve student achievement, we've got to, we must have experienced, credentialed staff. We must have administrators who support our, our programs. Just heard recently, some of our STEM programs are not getting the support. If the, the teacher, colleges are not funding these, these programs, we're gonna have to dig deep and, and fund what is important, train what is important, test ourselves, make sure that we are, as, as, as Freedom, Freedom, excuse me, Freedom said, you know, the delivery. And instead of, if a, if a student is not doing well today on that test, don't give him or her remedial work if they, maybe you find out they're not engaged. So, there's a lot of teacher insight that has to go along with it, but we have a job to do, and it's, it's a very complex.
Hattie?
Thank you. I think to improve the academic performance of our students, we're gonna have to look at a lot of different things. Curriculum definitely needs to be looked at. Also, we have to incorporate the goals of our State Board of Education into everything that we do. But I think that once you look at that, you look at what the state is driving, you look at the policies from a local perspective, you look at the schools and what they're teaching, and then you also want to be able to offer some flexibility to the teachers to bring, bring in tried and true programs. Don't be so rigid that new things can't be introduced to the students. I think that we have to re-involve the parents in the student's success. I don't believe that a student can be as successful as they could be. They won't reach their potential if their parent is not engaged in their education. But one thing for certain, if the parent is on board and they're aware of where their student is, they're talking to the teachers, they're going to the schools, they're talking to those students in the evenings, and that learning process continues once they get home, it just makes a student more comfortable in the educational process. And in saying that, then, I think you have to look at what kind of help can the Board of Education offer the parent-student relationship even outside of school? So, I think that in, in really proposing that parents get involved, you have to also think that we may have to do some parent-student funding to move them along, to help them be successful, because again, when, when they graduate from high school, we want them to be productive people in our society, we want them to contribute to our society and to the success of our society. So, it's really bringing the family back into the equation and making sure they feel comfortable in communicating with the schools, with the Board of Education, whatever it takes to make our students successful.
Now, we'll turn to JD Rios for the next question.
This is kind of tough. I was going to ask a legislative question because you are also advocates, governmental advocates, and you have a legislative agenda that you always pass as a, as a board. But I, I'm thinking I want to follow up on Mary's question because USD 500, again, there's some unique data. Only 55% of the adults 21 and over have a high school diploma. In zip codes that USD 500 serves, less than 10%, less than 10% have a two-year degree or above. I'll let you assess how much responsibility USD 500 has for this statistic. But you talk about- But you talk about parents helping when forty-five percent didn't graduate themselves. Their educational attainment, even of those fifty-five percent that did, less than ten percent of them have some sort of post-secondary education. So my question is, what is the responsibility of USD 500 to your former students or to your parents of your current students in enabling and empowering them to, in fact, be of assistance to their children's educational process?
Okay, and we'll start with Hattie.
That's a loaded question. Because I think that when you look at the statistics of the educational gauge in USD 500, you also have to explore that a lot of parents, a lot of students have relocated out of USD 500. So what we're left with are people that are not satisfied with the education that their students are getting in USD 500, and that's got to change. In order for us to retain those that graduate or didn't graduate, in order for us to retain those that go to college, and we want them to go to college and bring their education back to USD 500 or Wyandotte County, but really, we're talking USD 500, so many of them do not live in this area. So when we start building that data, when we start building those statistics, we are missing out on so many generations of people that are no longer here. In my effort, in me running for Board of Education, all I hear all the time, "I wish I was in USD 500, I would vote for you," and I'm thinking, "Well, where are you?" But I understand that they are moving themselves out of the district, which changes our numbers. I know so many people that have graduated and have gone to school, but the minute they do that, they don't come back here because they don't feel like they can give their children a quality education in USD 500. That has got to change. So that's what I'm saying. If we're going to talk about the parent being involved and engaged in their students' education, we've got to look at, what do we do to help them become engaged? Because I have a master's degree, and I help my grandchildren with homeworking, and it's not easy. I'm like, what is this? And then when I say, "Well, let me show you how we did it. We can get the same answer, but if I don't do it this way, then it'll be counted wrong." So they're not comfortable in accepting help from me, and I'm not comfortable in giving it. So it's like, let's get on the same page. So again, when we talk about engaging the parents in their students', in our students' education, we've got to look at, how can we help them become engaged? How can we help them become more comfortable in helping the student? And that may be reaching out to the school system and saying, "I need some help myself." So if the student doesn't understand, and I don't understand, that makes the teacher's job a whole lot more difficult the next day, but we've got to get on the same page. So our educational system has got to include the education of the parents as well.
Valdina?
Thank you. When I started my introduction, I said that I have a personal passion for service to our community and a commitment to public education. So I will answer with, with that, that we have to take responsibility. And it may be adult literacy classes, it may be GED, I think I mentioned before, partnering with the Community College, that there, there used to be a concept, and I haven't seen in the literature lately, but they call beacon schools, that the school would open in the evening to serve that, that neighborhood, to serve that, to serve kind of like as the lighthouse for, for that immediate neighborhood. And, and I would suggest that's, that's the opportunity that if, you know, if our, since our staff has been engaged all day long, it, it may be a bit to ask to spend four more hours, but that's where our community partners could come in, that, that our schools are open, our parents are there, our, our after-school tutors, that we can do that. And, and it may sound just, just so simple, but they're also the taxpayers. They're paying for our schools. So it's kind of a two-way street here. We can, we can provide basic learning. It could just be financial literature, literature. That's about as bad as calling you freedom. Financial literacy, adult literacy. It doesn't have to be the new math that you're not understanding, that I probably don't know at all, but, but little steps are important to educate our, our families, to make them feel more comfortable about getting involved in their students' education. But, but the short answer, but the more serious answer is that we have a responsibility. And not only because they are taxpayers, but they are, and each of us will agree, the, the life of the community, the strength of the community, the, the economic development of a community circles, centers around this educational level. So, so if we want to grow our community, that's also part of our responsibility.
Frida?
I think I have mentioned where we have a community, a very unique community, in which some of our families just haven't gone through the school system. And so it is, it is a learning curve for our families. And so not only are immigrant families and community, but we have families, and I've spoken to a number of parents who've had horrible experiences in the school district, and that they want so much more for their kids, but they do not feel like they have, they don't even know because they have their own bias and their own experience, and so they're like, "Yeah, you know, that's just how that is." And so really giving families the voice to empower themselves, to advocate for their children. I go to IEP meetings with families because I had a horrible experience and had filed a state complaint against our school district. And so through that experience, I was able to learn quite a bit and be able to take that information, and now I transfer that to our families to make sure that they see that themselves in a role to advocate and learn alongside with their families, and that they're able to really utilize the resources within our community. I also wrote down that, you know, we have a school, we have a superintendent who, thankfully this year, if I understood the board meeting correctly, they will have, in elementary schools, are required to take a field trip to a college campus. And so we really do have to foster that, that transition so much earlier in our students' lives. We can't wait until middle and high school. We really do need to really help our kids see themselves in that environment because our, our families unfortunately are not making that transition successfully. Again, we, I would agree with Dr. Nguyen because we have to take that into account, and we have to be accountable because we have only fourteen percent of our students reading on grade level. We, and, and only about three percent of them are reading on college ready, college readiness level. And so how are they, how are we expecting them to be ready for a transition that we haven't prepared them for? And so we, again, have to go back to looking at our policies, looking at our curriculum, and making sure that we are bringing along our, we are requiring and expecting our, our staff and our administration to utilize all of the resources in our community, and that includes partnerships. And so making sure that we're using our upward bound program. I know that KU has an upward bound, and in the past, that, you know, there was some partnership with the district and gear up. I was sad to see that there was a, there was a partnership with Donnelly that wasn't our college, to our high school-to-college transfer program, and the name, I'm sorry, is Gateway, Gateway to College. Thank you. Because I had a niece in that program, and it went away, and it was no longer funded. And so we really, that, those really opened the doors to our community because, again, if we aren't accepting that we have to meet those families where they are, the students where they are, and set high expectations, then again, we are going to get what we've always gotten.
Randy?
Great, thank you. So I'm going to pick on my mom again because she's here. I know. So my, my mom often says to me, and I tell her to stop, but she often, she often apologizes to me because she says that she wasn't able to help me out in high school, to get through high school, to be successful in high school, to get into college, to get the, the resources, the help that I needed in college. And she often apologizes because she says she just didn't know how, and she didn't know what, what to do in order to help me out. And I tell her to stop apologizing, and I'm like, "Mom, you, you provided love and hope, and you provided me a stable household, and you did way more than enough, and I'm forever grateful for what my parents were able to provide for my family and I." I wonder how many parents in, in those statistics that you mentioned, J.D., feel the same way or similar to how my mom feels, that they just don't understand or don't know and aren't sure how that they can help out their kids? And I think it's, it's, it's a multifaceted approach that we need to look at when we're tackling this issue within our community and within our families. I think it's part of our, our responsibility as a school district to make sure that we're starting early with all of our kids, to make sure that we're talking to our, our kindergarteners, our pre-K, and even when mothers are expecting, working with them and doing some home visiting with them, with our partners, to talk to them about setting themselves up and their kids up for success as they move forward. So I think there's, it's a multifaceted approach that starts at pregnancy, right? And making sure that we're working with our families to guide them through the entire pipeline of graduating and moving through our system, and working with our parents to make sure that they, they feel supported in, in a way where they, they have a welcoming, safe space that they can come in and that they feel valued and that their voices are being heard, and that they feel like there are folks there that are supporting them. And I think the district, I mean, we have quality, we've got some great staff that, that does that. You know, I was saddened to hear that we closed down the Welcome Center this year that provided that avenue for a lot of our immigrant refugee students to come and find a space to get the resources that they would need. It was, it was a common space where folks could come and feel valued and get all of the resources they needed in one space. So we need to lift up programs like that, whether it's reopening or finding something similar. I think we need to, it's not all doom and gloom either, right? We've got some really positive things going on. And I know our migrant education program has literacy nights that they, that they host for families to come out and, and do some amazing things with families so that they feel supported. But I think, you know, one of the things that was mentioned is working with our community partners as well. I know a, a neighboring school district that has a community plaza, what they call Plaza Comunitaria, which works with our adult learners to find a space for them to either get their high school diploma if they don't have it, or find resources to get their GED, or get some college courses, or get a job if they need to, or just a space where they can come and access other community social resources that are in our community. Can we build spaces like that, or how do we improve our own spaces like that as a district through partnering with our, our community programs? And I mentioned, I sit on the board for the Hispanic Development Fund. We have a partnership with, with a couple of school districts in the area where we're taking families, students, and parents on college visits. Just a couple of weeks ago, we took two busloads to KU, to the KU campus, went to a football game, we took them to classes, we took them, and they got to meet the professors. The parents were there every step of the way and were a part of every process that was there. How do we continue to build on that with our, with our families and parents so that they feel they have an avenue to do that? And how do we do that within our school district to make sure HDF is present as well? You know, when I worked at Shawnee Mission School District, we had Familia First Nights, where we did everything in Spanish and/or bilingualy to encourage families to be present, to make sure that, that families felt that they could, could come and that they would understand what was going on. And we need to make sure that those spaces continue to grow and, and are, that we're supportive of it. Again, it's not all incumbent on, on the school district to do all this. All this does cost money and needs resources. We can't do it all, but we have plenty of amazing partners in our community that can help us do that so that parents, like my mom or others, find the support that they need to not only provide that, that, that love at home, but feel that they have a space where they can come and help their student or their child be successful.
Yuri?
Thank you for the, thank you for the question, J.D. I do want to say that one of the most smartest people, two of the most smartest people in my life have been my mom and my dad. Both, my dad a dropout from high school and my mom an immigrant from Mexico. And although times were hard and they weren't able to always assist in the needs, they always found that fight and that time in order to help me. And I just want to say that although someone doesn't have a degree or a certain area doesn't have a degree, that does not identify the knowledge that they have within themselves and the information and education that they carry within themselves. So I'll point that out first. Whenever I struggled with my education, my dad made sure that he would find the accessibilities in order to help me. He made sure that if he didn't know how to do something, Google and YouTube was right around the corner in order to help us out. My mom, who is not from here, was able to help me on some of the most challenging homework because she wanted to make sure that I was able to do the right thing. And I think that we have to recognize the areas where, where it comes from. I worked for the Historic Northeast Midtown Association where they had the heat report. And in that heat report, it identified the areas that were the most uneducated, most impoverished, most likely to have heart disease. And I noticed that one of those things was that those areas were specific, were specifically in one certain area, and that area was Northeast KCK. And so we have to recognize the challenges that Northeast KCK has, whether it's not having a grocery store and a child, and a parent are trying to recognize, am I going to be focused on the book, getting a book, helping my student on their homework? Am I going to be focused on getting food and finding a way to find food for my children? We have to recognize the life experiences some of these students go through. And with the new ways of technology and social media, I mentioned having a platform for parents to understand and parents to get these things, and using social media or using the website, I think it's important to find a way and change the methods of education in order to provide a platform for parents to get a quick crash course on how to help their student with the education that they're getting. And then I also agree with partnering with other organizations, Avenue of Life, Heartland 180, even partnering up with Kansas City Kansas Community College, who has a continuing education building. And even just the fact that Kansas City Kansas Community College is already going inside of our high schools and providing classes so that peak parents and that they have a high school degree can get their associates is also important. But creating these atmospheres, finding these tools and accessibilities in order to help parents and help community members in order to engage together, I think is also important. And then provide new resources that we can help teachers with. I was talking to my cousin, also a high school dropout, but I know that she continues to fight in order to make sure that her students are educated. There was one point where she didn't know what to do with the homework, so she came to my room and asked me if I could help my little cousin do her homework. One of the great things that is happening now is that that's changing. Her new teacher that she got this year, who's been teaching for over twenty years, now provides parents with the packet of how to do certain things and give those, give those students a guide. I know that that's not one of the tasks that is asked by the teacher, but methods and times are changing. We have babies raising babies. We have community members who are lacking education, and I think it's sometimes a point that the community and the, and the school district come together in order to provide those things. And whether it's, if, if they all share the same curriculum, I'm sure they can all share the same resources in order to educate the parents. And if it's teaching the parents what verbs are, what nouns are, there are those resources out there in order to do so. But I'll tell you something, just because someone has a degree, that doesn't identify whether they can help the child or not. What identifies if they could help the child or not is the accessibility, the tools, and motivation that is behind each and every parent.
Monica?
J.D., I want to thank you for that question. Unfortunately, my children just left. I personally felt like that question was directed just at me. I'm probably the only one up here that does not have any college degree at all. I mean, I have no college classes. But I worked three jobs to put my husband through school so he could get a college degree. I often didn't know who to go talk to, so I went and talked to the principals at my school, my teachers, my kids' teachers. And I was like, "Okay, I don't get this. How do I do this? Who can I talk to to find out these answers?" So I utilized those resources. Then that's part of the reason why I got involved in PTA was because I realized those were parents that were doing the same things I was doing, or there were parents in that group- group that knew a lot more than I did and could help me find bigger and better answers. So that's what I did. I mean, I just, like you guys have all said, utilize the resources in our community. I, I literally started just knocking on doors and calling people going, okay, I don't get this. Help me figure out how to do this. But another thing that I wanted to talk about too was life skills. I was part of Randy Watson's statewide tour when he did the, the life skills, or the listening tour. And he was talking about how businesses are not looking for specifically the degrees that they've always been looking for. They're looking for other things. They're actually looking for life skills. So I think that's something that we really need to look at in, as, when we go back to the curriculum part of it. And another thing I wanted to talk about was, I was part of the Community Strong Bond Team that helped raise all the money and got all that good stuff where we could get new buildings. And I do remember, you were part of that committee as well, Randy, you were part of that committee. I do believe that a big, big, big part of that conversation that we had multiple times was the fact that we were going to spend all this money and build all these beautiful buildings, but those buildings were going to be open to us as community so that we could have community groups in those meetings, we could have community meetings in those rooms, that we could utilize the, the libraries and all the educational spaces. And then when you go to a school board meeting and you hear that they're telling a church group that's been in there for 14 years that they can't do it now, that's kind of an issue. So that's something that, I mean, we can have all the resources that we can, can get, but if we don't have the spaces to utilize, that's, that's a big issue for me as well.
Chaney?
How can we help our kids by helping their parents? That's the question. We have to reach out to the parents where they are. We have, just because Emerson's parents need this does not mean that fits the needs of the Stony Point South parents. We need to look at the individual communities. Ask the parents, what do you need? What do you want? We have math and, and literacy nights at almost all of our schools, but are we reaching the parents' way, the way they need it? All those languages you have, we do pretty good with our Spanish translations now, because thankfully, we have a lot of people in the community that speak Spanish and a lot of resources. But Chin, Corinne, we have so many of those different languages. Some of them do not even have a written language. It's only verbal. We need to use our resources with Catholic charities, all of our other community people to have more translators available for those parents. And many of these parents have come from refugee camps. They've never been in a school system. We need to provide down-to-earth resources for them. You know, for some parents, if they get their kid to school on time, that's all they can do, and they should be celebrated for that. Some parents can come to the school and volunteer, or they can come to classes and stuff, but we have to realize not everyone is the same, and we need to accept them for what they are and provide them with what they need and they want in a very caring manner, and show them that we are here for you, we're here for your kids. If you don't understand this, come ask us. Maybe we need to have a special night for third grade math, but we have to be approachable on the building level so those parents feel comfortable coming up and asking for the help. And everyone else has had great ideas, I'm not going to repeat them, but just, we need to remember that Parents as Teachers is a great program, especially with very young parents or immigrant parents, because it doesn't just reach out to the child, it reaches out for the whole family. Having quality preschool available for all of our kids, not just ones that meet certain guidelines, that'll have more of our kids ready for kindergarten when they start. Right now, a kindergarten teacher may have one child that is reading and one child that has never seen an alphabet in the same class. And we want them to provide personalized instruction for each child. So we need to look at preschool for every kid, we need to look at smaller class sizes, and different kinds of curriculum.
Thank you. Now we'll turn to closing remarks, and we'll start with Chaney Humphries. Chaney?
How long do I have?
Minute and a half.
I want to thank everyone for coming in tonight or watching it on TV. Hope you didn't fast forward through too much of it. I want to read something that's on my campaign material, and then I'll give up for the evening because I don't have much voice left. Providing a quality education for all of our children shows them that their family and community value them, that we care about their success in life. When children feel loved and valued, they are better equipped to reach out and push their limits, to try new experiences, and not be afraid of failure, to learn from it and become a more informed individual. When parents know the community values their child, they in turn take pride in the community where they live. A quality education provides a variety of experiences and resources for our children to access, making them a more knowledgeable citizen of our community, state, and nation, and the world. Providing the opportunity for our children to be successful and compete on a level playing field with their peers in our global economy. Our graduates must be productive, employable individuals. We need future voters to be literate, well-educated, so they make good, informed choices when they vote. I believe that all of our kids can be successful in many different ways, and a school board member must always remember to keep students as the focus of the work of our schools, and ask ourselves this question when we make decisions, is this what is best for all of our children? That is something I got from Gloria Willis, who was very much a mentor of mine. I'm asking for your vote on November 5th.
Monica?
I may not have the education, but I have the heart and the soul for the kids in our KCK schools. I will work my butt off to make sure that they get the quality education that they deserve. I will make sure and work with the team that's elected to make sure that our staff, administrators, all feel safe and secure in our buildings and have the tools that they need to provide the education that our kids can get or should get. I just appreciate the opportunity to be able to do this, and I want to thank you and for having us here tonight, and vote for me on November 5th.
Yuri?
First, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I want to thank the organizers and the moderators for this event. I have enjoyed my time and I am grateful for making it this far and making it this far in this, in this forum. Throughout this campaign, you know, I've heard a lot of things, and one of the things that is always brought up is my age, and probably because I bring it up as well. And people, don't I, so, so, but people will say, you know, wait your turn, it's not your time yet, you don't know anything about the school board. But I'll tell you something, Joe Kennedy gave me the best advice when he decided that he was going to run for senate this year, and he said that, with all due respect, I'm not sure that this is a moment for waiting. Our system has been letting down a lot of people for a long time, and it's time to fix it, and we can fix it if we make it. And I'm running for school board for that same reason. I want to have kids one day, but I want to make sure that my kids one day have the equitable education, that they have world-class education, because these students in USD 500 are world-class students. And running for school board would allow me to do those things in various capacities. I heard an administrator once say that the way that our students will be successful is by the ABCs, attendance, behavior, and courses passed. And it's important that we recognize that and make that initiative in our school district in order to fight for each and every USD 500 student. Although I'm the youngest candidate, as I continue to say, I will say this, our campaign has been endorsed by various amount of groups, from Run For Something, Kansas Families for Education, Equality Kansas PAC, the Teachers Union, the KCK, KNEA, Mainstream Coalition PAC, the Progressive Change Committee, and by the people of this community who are wanting something new, wanting a new voice, wanting someone who is there to fight for each and every USD 500 student. It is important that we have a school board member that looks like our students, that is going to fight for our students. Right now, we have never elected a Hispanic school board member. And let me tell you something, I believe that this is the year to finally not only just elect one, but elect two, Lopez Squared Gang. So, and I'll say this, I'll leave you all tonight with this before I ask for your vote, that Nipsey Hussle, a rapper and activist from California, said, "I'm about seeing long-term. I'm about seeing a vision and understanding that everything worthwhile does not happen overnight, and we just need to stick long enough, to stick to the script, long enough to make sure that something real happens." And it's all about a process, and it's all about acknowledging that process and seeing how it flows in order to make sure that the future of each and every USD 500 student is valued, that they're academically successful, and that they graduate with a plan. So I hope that I can earn your vote on November 5th as your USD 500 Board of Education member. Thank you.
Randy?
Gary, can I put that as an official endorsement on my Facebook? And I'm gonna use that clip. No, first I want to thank the organizers, the Business West, KCK Community College, for hosting tonight, to Mary, J.D., for the thoughtful questions, to all of you who are here present and that are watching, and then to all the candidates for participating tonight. One of the things that really excites me from, and I've said this from the beginning and tonight as well, is just, I'm excited about the passion that comes from all of the candidates for our students, for our community. And for me, it was really exciting to see 11 candidates who, who are running for the school board, because it, it tells me that, that we care. And that, at its core, is part of why I'm running, because I care. I care about this community. I've lived here all my life. I grew up in, in, in Wyandotte County, graduated from this district, and I care about my community. I've been engaged and volunteered and given back in, in ways in my community, and have always been authentically and genuinely just present in, in, in all of our community. And that doesn't change with this election. That doesn't change whether I become elected or not. I'm still going to continue to be me. I'm still going to continue to care for our kids. I'm going to continue to care for you, for Wyandotte County, and that doesn't change. I'll still be here, and I'm going to continue to fight and lift up the voice of all of our community, because I care about you. And I'm asking for your vote in November, because this is an important election. This local, local politics are so important, and, and we want to, we want to elect board members that are going to work together, that will help make sure that our district is the district of choice to not only attract qualified, quality staff all across the board, but that they want to stay and be here. We want a board that's going to work together to ensure that we lift up our morale in our district and in our buildings, and that our kids aren't feeling those tensions in those seats from adults. Adult problems shouldn't, shouldn't hit those kids. We want to make sure, and I'm going to make sure, if I'm elected, I'm going to work with all of our board members, because that's our job, that's our responsibility, to work together, to do what's right and what's best for all of our kids. And I want to make sure we have fun, too. It can't always just be tense. We want to make sure we have fun, because our kids see that, and we're a reflection of, of our community, and we want to make sure that our community sees that we, their elected leaders for the district, are coming together to bring unity and hope and success for all of our kids. So I'm asking for your vote on November 5th. I'm asking for your vote because I care. I care about you and I care about our community, and I'm going to continue to care whether I get elected or not. I'll still be present, and I'll still be working hard, and I'll still be advocating. But it'd be great to be able to do that from the board seat, so that my vote as one of those board members makes a difference, and I can lift up your voice. So thank you for tonight. Thank you for this journey. It's been amazing. Like Gary said, I really enjoyed this, this entire journey, and I look forward to what's to come in the future and to represent our community in whatever way that looks like. So again, Randy Lopez for USD 500 Board of Education. Make sure you get out and vote on November 5th. You've got one more day to register to vote, too. If you haven't registered, get registered and take 10 people with you to the, to the election booth, because we need to get voters out there, regardless of who you're voting for.
Thank you. Frida?
I want to thank everyone for coming out. Thank you for the moderators, and thank you for everyone who's watching this at home. I want to say hello to my children, who I would be remiss, so hi, Antonio, hi, Annika, do your homework. I am a mom, and I am really excited about this opportunity and really decided, when I decided to run for the board, that we need more parents at the table. We needed a voice where people are on the board, school board, who are actually being personally affected in the moment at the time. And so, again, I kept thinking to myself, whoa, this is not my comfort zone. But again, I've done the work, I've done the research, I've made sure that I'm educated about what is necessary and the role of the board, and I have talked, most importantly, to my community. And I feel as though us together, a voice of the parents and the will of our community is what is missing from our board, as well as making sure that we are, we are keeping ourselves and our focus on our students. So I am asking Frida Trezvan, be one of the four votes that you vote for on November 5th, because we together can raise our voices and make sure parents are heard. Thank you.
Valdina?
Thank you, Anne, thank you, Merle. Question nerves, but most important, you all in the audience and at home. I'm Valdina Nguyen, asking for reelection on November 5th. I have the experience, I have the knowledge, I have the commitment, and I have the courage. I have the courage to listen to the community and come to the board and repeat and ask the questions and be that liaison between the community and, and the board. I stand up for all students. I stand for all faculty, staff, taxpayers, but I almost got kicked out of the legislature for standing up for students, because public education in our lives is that important, and it's that important to me. And I have proven my commitment. I read all the documents. You probably would rather I not read everything sometimes, but I read everything. I spend time on, this is a volunteer job, remember, folks, but you have to have the commitment, and I've shown my commitment, and I'm asking humbly for your, your vote on, on November 5th. Valdina Nguyen, you have four votes. Please make one of those, Valdina Nguyen. Thank you.
Hattie?
Thank you. Thank you to the moderators for the tough questions that you've asked on tonight, but that's what it's going to take. It takes being asked tough, tough questions and being able to think through them and respond. And I so want to be a part of the Board of Education, not because I have an agenda, but I do want to see the success of our students, our children from USD 500. I want them to excel. I want them to be successful in life, and I see the pain that they go through in trying to understand what you're even trying to teach them. I'm not in, again, I'm not a part of the educational system as we know it, but I have been responsible for educating the learners, the adults that are hired into these positions. And I was with AT&amp;T, I was in management 35 years, I'm now in management again with local government, and it's painful. They want to do good. They want to make money, they want to excel, but they need help. And I just want to change the environment, or I want to be a part of the change, because I can't do it all, but I do want to be a part of the change that will redirect their thought process, that will give them confidence, that will lift their self-esteem, that when they come out of, come out of our public school system, they feel good about themselves and they're confident in going and talking to the employers and sitting down across the table and looking them in their eyes and saying, "I want to work for you, I want to make your company a better place. I want to leave it better when I leave than it was when I got here." So I do want to be a part of that cycle. And one of the things that I really encourage people to do is have an intentional vote. I want you to intentionally vote for Hattie L. Smith on November 5th. Don't just say, oh, I need to vote for one more person, let me see. No, I want you to look at the ballot and say, this one right here, Hattie L. Smith, she deserves to have a voice in the Board of Education, USD 500. And another thing I want to leave you with, that we're doing well, and yeah, we're making improvements. I'm really glad to see the changes that USD 500 is doing, the incentive- I'm really glad to see the changes that USD 500 is doing, the incentives they have for teachers. I think it's a plus, and I think that if you're doing well, if you're being productive, then reward your teachers. Let them know that I really appreciate the work that you're doing. So in other words, if better is possible, good, then it's simply not enough. Let's raise the bar and let's go higher.
Let's give all our candidates a hand.